Are we recording?
Thank you very much for your patience, folks. It's about 6:05. We are just making sure that all our technology was in place in that this is actually the second time that the board has been meeting in this space since before COVID. So I'm excited about that. So today is April 24th. And once again, it's 6:05 and I am starting the Groton Board of Education regular meeting. Our first order of business is for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I am willing, Clint, if you would be willing to lead us in the pledge. And the flag is behind me.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent Austin, I believe that we do not have any recognition or participation of visitors and delegations today. You are correct. All right. At this point, the board would be willing to, this is our comments from citizens section. And this is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less. And citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments or citizen portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentation from the podium, which we actually have a podium this time, and state their names and addresses for the record. The people who are in the audience are our staff. Is there anyone online? And Ms. Joan, do you know if there's anyone online?
There is no one.
I'm interested in speaking.
Okay, thank you, Portia. Go ahead.
Thank you. Portia Bordelon, 24 Jefferson Drive. For full disclosure, I'm a Groton Town Councilor. I just wanted to reach out. I know I spoke at the last meeting. I received the email from Mrs. Watson regarding the cost or as far as the AED machines in the high school. But I did not receive anything saying that there would be a plan to actually implement them. So that was my first question. And I will follow this up with an email. The other thing is, is I did reach out to the principal at Fitch, Mr. Brown, who was very helpful. And I had just reached out as a courtesy. I had reached out several years ago. And I noticed on the report cards from middle school and through high school over the last several years, there's no indication that a student has made honor roll, no recognition. Sometimes there's something in the newspaper. But on the actual transcript itself for the high school level, there's nothing saying what quarters even that you've made honor roll. And I looked at some other schools' report cards. I looked at Ledger Middle School and other different things to see. And I think it's really important that we, you know, as an Alliance District, one of our areas that we were deficient, you know, is it's very important that we recognize the students when they achieve a level of recognition, like honor roll or high honor roll. I know as a Fitch High School graduate of '98, they used to recognize us, call us down. And there would be sometimes a coffee and donut session or sometimes pizza. And they would recognize the students on that time. Sometimes parents were invited to come. It could be as simple or as elegant as you choose. I do think that not all students are National Honor Society. And I do think that Groton could look to make sure that the middle school and high school level honors and high honor roll students are recognized. If nothing else, on the transcript or principal report card, it should state the quarters. Under the high school report card, I looked at, it has a section called "other" that's completely blank. It would be a great opportunity in that section to write the quarters. Looking at my son, for example, at junior year, we were looking, you know, looking at planning for the future. And it would also make the transcript look a little bit more powerful by having the indication of students, you know, making or achieving. One of the reasons that this is important is because not all students take IB or AP classes, but they may achieve honor or high honor roll at their level. And so, again, it's just something that Mr. Brown said he would look into. I wanted to present it also to the board as a parent's concern. I spoke with other parents as well. And when you look at the report card, it just doesn't have any weight. It doesn't say anything. It just says GPA, weighted GPA. And then I asked someone else, I said, well, what does it mean, you know, if it doesn't say anything? And I guess other states and other areas have different criteria for making honor roll. So Groton's criteria, it should state somewhere on it that they met the criteria. So just a recommendation, hope that the board would consider this or maybe move this along and get it updated as soon as possible for the sake of the students. And I also think it makes a powerful statement on their resume, which their transcript is like a resume when they're selling themselves to different colleges. And again, Mr. Brown was very helpful. I did go through him and pass that on to him first. But I did want to bring it forward here. Thank you.
Councilor Bordelon, thank you very much for your comments. I will make sure that Superintendent Austin and the Director of Facilities gets back to you about the machine placement and the implementation of those or, you know, if they, what is the plan? And I'm sorry, I did not close the loop on that. So I'll take responsibility for that. And I think your point about understanding what's on the transcripts or not and honoring people makes a lot of sense in that I'm going to ask that Superintendent Austin and her staff also look into that and see what we can do. So thank you very much for adding stuff to, adding stuff to her list, but actually bringing to the attention to the board this really kind of important thing. I would like to recognize.
Do you know me?
Ms. Porter, yes.
Okay. I want to say thank you to Portia Bordelon for bringing this out because I do remember when I started teaching at Fitch back in 2000 that that was something that I thought was really a community builder, that after every quarter, there was donuts or pizza. And it was, and I actually was, had a lot of fun going. And even though kids just popped in, it was a really good community builder. So I think it's very important that we recognize not only our kids who are in those upper echelons, but every kid who has achieved. And, you know, it gives them something to work for. I think it's a great idea. It's a good incentive. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to, you know, add my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you for adding your two cents.
Mrs. Watson?
Yes. Can I recognize Dean Antipas first?
Sure.
Thank you.
I agree with you, Portia. I've seen my kids' transcripts. I've got two in college now. And I don't know what difference it makes, but I was a little, I don't know what word to use, miffed maybe too soft to see that there was no, it wasn't a full expression of what was in there, of what they'd accomplished, you know, while they were at high school. So I don't know why. I kind of hope that our unofficial copy was a little blanker than the ones that went to schools, but I don't know. And it was what it was. There may be a reason for this, and I don't know what it is.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelon?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I just, well, thank you for the comments from the two people who spoke. And I just want to thank you for that. I appreciate, you know, those comments. I have looked at an official transcript as well, and it is null and void on that as well. I did look into this several years ago at the middle school level, and it just went away. Also, I just think it is important, as it was stated, to recognize students at every level. And, you know, I looked at surrounding towns. And, you know, we're all Facebook parents and social media parents. And people were posting in different districts about, oh, my son, daughter made honor roll. And they had, you know, a little paper certificate. And there was a ceremony and some type of recognition at school. And I do think it makes other students look to ways to achieve levels, you know, that may be gradual. And I think it'd be helpful. Thank you.
No, thank you so much. I'm going to recognize Katie.
As the only high school, current high school student in here, I can just tell you, donuts are a great incentive for everyone my age.
Pizza, too.
I'm not quite sure that it's just two high schoolers because I think donuts are a great incentive.
Donuts are an incentive for everyone.
Yeah. I'm with you, Katie.
I was just wondering, are we due for a revision or a look at the, excuse me, the report card?
I think we are.
I thought we were up for a revision to look at that. And now, are the, my question is about the transcripts. Are transcripts generated by the state of how they're supposed to look? Or is it indicative for each district to have its own transcript?
I'm going to add this to our, because I think it, I think it used to be on the template, our yearly template. And I'm going to make sure that it gets back on because I think on a yearly basis, we should be looking at those questions. Though I think Councilwoman Bordelon was talking more about, like, also the recognition, like, there's the, making sure that it has recognition on the transcripts, but some way of saying yay. And it sounds to me that the high school, one of the principals are made aware of that. So I'm going to make sure that it gets on there. I see you taking notes as well on that. Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm just hoping, hoping middle school is also recognized.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I think, I think it's across the board. I only said high school, but I think it's across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will add, being an international baccalaureate, middle years program, six through 10, there is a necessity to look at the report cards to make sure we're including that information. So it is very timely that you bring this up.
Cool.
Thank you.
Cool. All right. Is there any other comments from the community? Hearing none, I'm going to move us on to Ms. Katie, who has, what, six more weeks?
Not that I'm counting, but yes. Hi, I'm Kate Sabashi. I'm a senior at Fitch High School. I just have a few things to present. Most exciting, at least I think, is Fitch Senior Nazir Matthews was just named Wrestler of the Year by the New London Day. So that's a pretty great honor for him. And then I was shared with this today that the seventh and ninth grade students will be attending a presentation about the indigenous Massey tribe. And they'll be learning about their history, customs, and challenges living in Kenya and Tanzania. I believe that's coming up next week.
No, it's Wednesday.
Oh, it's this week.
This Wednesday.
She knows better than I. Look at you. I also wanted to share that the Drama Club performance of Little Shop of Horrors is on May 12th and 13th at 7:00 PM in the Fitch Auditorium. I know a lot of my friends are really looking forward to being a part of that performance, whether they be, you know, on the stage or helping behind the scenes. They're all very excited. Junior and senior prom are also coming up. Junior prom is on May 6th. And that's at the Porton Starboard in New London. And senior prom is June 2nd. And that's going to be at the Mystic Marriott. The senior trip is also to Seaside Beach Club, and that's on June 6th. And the senior class is also having a Chipotle fundraiser on May 1st, where a third of the sales are going to go to our class. So help us pay off prom. But yeah, that's all I've got. So thank you.
Katie, thank you very much. And just to, I believe that Zoe is not here because she is participating in a softball game.
Yeah, Zoe has softball and Isaiah has baseball.
And I was going to say, I know that Isaiah is at a baseball. So, but thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate that.
Can I add to, to our report? What's the young man's name? Mr. Matthews?
Nazir.
Nazir. I learned today, because I was up at the high school today, that he also was, was successful competing on the national stage.
That's true. We sent him to nationals.
So, I mean, this is really something for a wrestler from this small, little neck of the woods because the primary wrestling community, not that I know that much, is out of Ohio and Pennsylvania. And he held his head high. And he represented Connecticut, he represented Groton very well.
That's phenomenal.
So it was absolutely phenomenal. So Nazir Matthews, congratulations.
Yeah, sure. That's really cool. That's really cool. Rita, welcome home. I'm glad that you had a safe travel. I see that you have just joined us. Thank you.
Yes. Hi. Sorry.
That's fine. I'm glad that you're here. We have a huge chunk of data that Susan is going to be presenting to us. We have a pretty short part after that. And my question to the board is, would you like us just to table for a second the Susan's data stuff, get through the rest of the reports so that the remainder of the time could be in conversation with, with the data? How does the board feel?
Excellent idea.
I'm sorry?
Excellent idea.
Okay. I just need to have a motion on the floor.
So.
Second. Okay. So the motion is on the floor, Joan, to move, to cover everything else on the agenda. Now that we've gotten through the community portion, I wanted to make sure that got handled. It was first by Matthew, and it was second by Andrea. Is there further discussion?
So we're just doing A, right? I mean, what we're doing is a rearrangement.
We're holding on on A. A is at the end. Thank you for clarification. No, I think we can do the rest.
Yeah, let's get through the staff part.
Just A is being moved to the end. Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. So is there any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is to move A to, Agenda Number A to the end? Please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. So Ken, because I know that you just love talking about your reports and stuff, you are up next, sir.
Great. So I'm going to share attachment number five.
If you can read it.
Okay. Everything worked. So attachment number five is our object code summary updated through April 19th. This report shows that, shows that we are anticipating a projected unexpended balance of, I lost it on my screen.
I have $34,736.
$34,736. Thank you so much. The primary drivers here are under-budget variances in special education and salaries, as it has been throughout the year, offset by increased or over-budget variances with energy, with fuel, and the addition of the additional two school buses. So that's what brings us to that balance.
And I would say that our principals have been super efficient monitoring their expenses. And we'll be meeting with them in the next couple of weeks individually to really see what is necessary as we end out the year. So we'll continue with that efficiency.
$34,000.
It's a very tight, tight window there. We're hoping to make it.
We will.
We will make it.
Any other questions about the object summary?
Where were we last year this time? If you have that.
I do not have that.
I'm sure I have it somewhere.
But it was more than this, Dean.
It was more than this. We were in a different, a little bit different situation last year, but.
Yeah.
But we typically don't have a lot of funds left over. We typically have tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands.
Correct.
Right.
But it's the end of April. Right? Still have.
I'm sure if I pulled out my stack from last year, I could probably track it from this figure to the next one to the end of the year, you know, to June 30th and see if I were to map the trend onto this, where would we be? Just out of curiosity, but thanks.
If hearing no other comments about the object code summary, let's go to our insurance.
All right. I can share that one as well. All right. This is health insurance claims through the month of February. You'll notice February was at 127.8% of anticipated. So this trend where it's kind of below the anticipated for the first part of the year and then over the anticipated for the remainder part of the year is what's expected. We have a high deductible health plan. And so throughout the beginning part of the year, the deductibles are being used up. And then as you get towards the end of the plan year, it's more, more of it gets covered through, through the, through this, through the reserve. So year-to-date, we're at 87.5%. This does compare, I do have last year's for that one at 91.4%. So we're a little bit better, actually, than we were at the same point last year.
And so the next report that we would get would cover the March-April, do you think?
Yeah. It usually takes them a good 20, 25 to 28 days to get the report. So I'm expecting the March report this week.
Okay.
And so usually, we were kind of like a month behind.
Okay. And so the trend of the 127% is not, is a trend that we normally would be seeing.
Yeah. It's not alarming. Last year was different. But the past few years have been different just because the state of things have been different. But I think this is the trend we should expect to see.
Okay. Any other questions about the insurance? Yeah. Liz?
You say you're not worried. Should we be worried? No. No. Okay. So we have, what I'm asking, I think, is, you know, I know we've looked at, to balance the budget or to bring the budget down, we've won, we've gone into our reserve. So are we in our reserve? Have we used our reserve at all for this?
We anticipated this happening. This anticipated number is what we anticipate to happen. And so as long as we stay in this trend, not go much more over it, we should be, we're in good shape.
To not use that?
To be exactly where we anticipated to be.
To use just what we have put aside.
To use, okay. Not to dig into the reserve?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kilpatrick, have you been a little bit busy lately?
Beg your pardon?
Have you been busy lately? That's not a way of getting out of talking to us, sir.
Good evening. I just have a couple of things that I want to report. I guess the first thing is, if you'll indulge me for just a second, I'd like to express my gratitude to the transportation coordinators, Jenny Aquino and Vanessa Simon, who on Friday, when we were alerted that there was a problem on the bridge, went into, called me in, and we had a meeting immediately. And during that meeting, Vanessa, we knew that some bus is going to be very late and that one particular bus was going to have to go across the bridge and, or to New London to pick up kids after they dropped off our elementary kids, which would have meant that it would have been hours late. And Vanessa volunteered to go down and get the extra bus at the bus garage in the middle of the afternoon. She traveled up through Norwich, back down, got there a couple of hours after school, and then drove all those kids home from our MMS. And I think the last kid was dropped off at about 6:39 Friday night. And Vanessa got home probably about an hour and a half, two hours after that. So I just want to express thanks to them for their hard work. And along with our bus drivers, STA, the administration, and the bus drivers especially. I didn't hear any panic on the radio. Bus drivers were more than willing to do whatever they had to do, go wherever they had to go. We had to reroute bus drivers. And they were very helpful in calming up the kids. And it went very well, considering, even though everybody was late getting home. So with those thanks, I'll move on, if I may, to the second item that was unexpected. And that was that we had a concern at Mystic River Magnet School on Monday when some connectors in the ceiling failed. They're called Hilti connectors. They failed, and part of the ceiling sagged down. The administration moved the kids out of the cafeteria and back to their classrooms in an orderly fashion. And we were very fortunate that the very next day, the contractor, both the contractor and ONG, sent their representative, Tim Chan, back down and started on Tuesday morning removing parts of the ceiling so they could get up there and find out what happened and started putting it all back together. Fire marshal came. The building official came. They gave authorization, or the building official agreed with the fix that ONG came up with. And by Friday morning, I had the authorization from both the fire marshal and the building official to allow the kids to go back into the cafeteria. So on Friday, when I got that word, it was, I think it was just before lunchtime, we spent that couple of hours cleaning up the cafeteria so that this morning, all of the students were able to go back into the cafeteria and use the cafeteria. So very fortunate that we had good contractors on the job. ONG was very responsive, and we're pretty thankful for that, too. The manufacturer, Hilti, is sending a rep down. I did take the part that failed to our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting the other night. I showed it to Dean and Jay and those that were at the meeting. They are going to be looking at that and determining exactly why that failed. Whether it was, I guess, six of those actually failed. So the reason for that, we're not sure of. But they're going to be looking into that. In the meantime, we scheduled an inspection of Thane's River Magnet School, which has the same ceiling and some of the same connectors. They're on there a little bit differently. We did look at it last week. Felt fairly secure in that. But we do have another inspection tomorrow morning to look at that ceiling in more detail. And we'll go from there, starting tomorrow morning. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? All right. Hearing none, let's move on. Thank you. So we're now at our commu, our commu, wow. Busy for people to say, but not me. We're now at our committee reports. Policy?
We were working on a promotion and retention. And we're going to be looking at examining grading. I'm sorry. My voice is like this. However, and we were, we had the library policy scheduled to come to for a first reading. But the state has sent us some material to look at it. We want to do that before we bring it.
Thank you. Curriculum?
Yeah, we met, I don't even remember now, but we've met. Was it last week? But we looked at, we were asked to look at the possibility of adding another portion of Project Lead the Way. And it would be an independent project that's like a capstone. And we are getting the information from the school about the outline of this. We're looking at, is this required to be a separate course that needs to be, you know, piloted? Or is it an extension of another course, course that needs to be, you know, piloted, or is it an extension of another course, of the same course of the Project Lead the Way? So we're, we're just starting to look at it, but we need to move on it because they need to get this, we have students who are eligible for this in their senior year, and we don't want to give those students, you know, not, provide for them what they need to be, to have for a successful senior year. So Dr. Piazza have, I don't remember seeing anything coming from Mr. Keller here. Did we send it? Did you send it?
I thought I sent it that afternoon, but I can resend it.
Please do, because I don't remember receiving. Did you receive it, Andrea?
Yes.
Okay, so it's me. It's my fault.
We'll double check.
Okay, thank you.
But as we, I think we identified there, it was, it was a problem, but it was a good problem.
Yeah, it's a great problem.
The first time we have students who are eligible to do that because they've completed all the other parts of the process.
Yeah, cool, that's great. So it is a positive. Just trying to make sure we maintain what our process is, and that it is respected. Thank you.
Finance and Facilities, Jay?
Yes, good evening. We met on April 18th. We discussed the 2023-2024 salaried wages for non-union personnel. We discussed the meal program with Ernie, and he also discussed the summer meal program, where those would be held. And I just want to say thank you to Sam and his crew for turning around that situation at Mystic River. Very quickly, I know Sam was there the next morning at 6:00 AM with contractors to make sure that that cafeteria was back in service. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Communications?
I'm pleased to say that we may have finished our work on the communication plan. It is in final draft, and we made a motion to accept it, subject to getting the final proposals in written form and out to the committee members for vote, and hopefully we can have it to you by the next COW. I'd like to particularly thank Rebecca and Phil, without whom we would have been looking and finishing it months from now.
Moving on, so negotiations, there are members of the Board of Education who are starting the negotiation process with our, the union that represents our paraprofessionals. And I know that this coming Thursday is a, is a meeting for the, for the board, and then I think that we start our, our work together in the following week. So just to let the board know about that. Rita, do you have information from Learn?
Well, from, from Learn, basically, we talked about the budget and passed the budget for next year. The approved budget, I think it's about $55 million. And we also passed quite a few, I think, 12 policies. So that's, that's basically what went on at the meeting. Thank you.
Wow.
I know.
It's a lot. So the town, the Town Council, the RTM Board of Ed, and Ms. Joan, I just want to make sure that we get the Groton City on there as well for the liaison. Our meeting, I believe, is going to be the beginning of June. June 2nd kind of rings a bell in my head, but that's just a bell. We have, our next AGSA liaison meeting is in May. I can't remember the date, but that's coming up, and that will wrap up our, our year together for the 2022-2023 school year. Groton scholarships?
Yeah, the meeting for this month had been canceled. However, next month, we will be going into assigning award, or awarding the different scholarship amounts to the students who have, who have submitted their applications. The essays and all the applications are in the process of being read right now and evaluated.
Cool. Athletic fields, Jay, is there any new information?
No, we are still not meeting while they hash out the former Claude Chester property.
Trails?
There was no meeting last month.
The library?
The library. Since COVID, before COVID, the three libraries in the town have met together for an annual get-together and coordination effort, and that is going to happen this year sometime in the autumn. And there is some consideration, there, there will hopefully be either at that meeting or at a separate meeting, the opportunity for our librarian media specialists to interact with some of the librarians in the town, to see whether, you know, what other additional opportunities for collaboration there may be.
We typically always meet with the town library, city library, at the end of spring so that we can plan for summer, because the town offers summer programming as we do. So that's a good time. So I'll let everybody know when that meeting takes place.
Would you let me know?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Permanent School Billing Committee. So I believe, Dean, you may not know this, but you are, actually have been assigned to that. But I don't think you knew that.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, okay, so.
Wouldn't be the first. It's a lot I don't know.
You can report just because you don't know.
That's right.
I can report that I haven't met.
Okay, all right. And then the State Council will be meeting on May 21st. Okay. All right, so next one. All right, so the next item is our consent agenda, which is all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed, and I will take a motion for that.
So moved.
Can I take a, can I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Liz?
I just want to clarify that I've been given permission now, that the Groton Public Schools received a donation of, it's almost 200 spiral-bound college ruled notebooks, and they were donated generously from the Yukon Avery Point Bookstore, Barnes &amp; Noble. Tristine Brine is the manager, and I just wanted to say, shout out this, thank you very much. I delivered those today to the high school. There were 21 boxes of spiral-bound notebooks.
Thank you very much.
Principal Keller was very excited, and we'll be able to roll that out in the beginning, start of the school year, so that students won't have to go and buy them. They'll be given them. So that was great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. For new business, Matthew, would you read the motion, please, for number one?
Thank you. I move that we recognize May 2nd, 2023 as National Teacher Day, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to all of our teachers.
Second. That's been seconded. Any discussion?
Here, can I, I just want to ask, to put in my, my two cents in here, and to thank the teachers who dealt with that crisis at the middle, I mean, at the elementary school, Mystic River, Mystic River Magnet School, with the ceiling falling and stuff, and how they, they jumped in and they just really roasted the challenge. And I just wanted to say, thank you. We appreciate it. They do what they do. Good job.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? That motion has carried. Dean, would you please read the motion for number two?
Yes. I move to recognize May 10th, 2023 as National School Nurse Day, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the nurses.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I, I have Liz for a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to recognize May 10th as National School Nurse Day, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the nurses. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. So we're going on to the information and proposal, which are the non-action items. Rita, do you have emails or other communications?
Yes, I, we, I received, like probably other board members, quite a few communications about the reading program. And it is something that I have hoped that we get to really discuss in full in the very near future. I know you, you kind of backed it up a little bit. It's not going to be really at this meeting, but one in the future. But I'd like a time when the parents can also come and speak to us about their concerns. That's it.
Thank you. Bev?
The same emails that Rita received, most likely, and a concern about the basketball program at the high school, which I will call Susan about and talk to her privately about that.
That you're going to, or you did, Bev? I'm sorry.
No, I'm going to. I think Susan was away, so I gave a couple of days.
Okay, thank you, Bev.
But I will, I will, I will be calling others.
I appreciate that. Yeah. Thank you, Bev. William?
Nothing new to share.
Thank you. Matthew?
Nothing additional.
Dean?
Yes, independent of the emails, which we probably all got regarding the reading program, I had it on my, on my notes because of the data, because of the last meeting, to ask that at some point, we have a, I don't know whether a dedicated meeting, or at least a dedicated portion of a meeting to talking about the reading program specifically, not just the results, but also the reading program.
Which will be on May 8th, is our next committee of the whole meeting, and it has been dedicated to the K through three reading program.
Thank you.
You got it.
Kim?
Yes.
Kim, from, from out here in the ether. But is it possible to have some information from the state of Connecticut about why they chose their six reading programs that they'd like the towns to adopt in the state of Connecticut? Is there, is there anybody in the state that could come and talk to the board about that?
So, so Rita, I don't know if people can talk. I did get your email, and I has, I have talked that over with Susan, and I plan to reach out to someone to see, to tell them that we are going to be, going to be having that conversation, and whether they could either join us by Zoom or give us information about why those six programs. But yeah.
Right, even if they, you know, present something in writing to us.
Yeah.
I'm just very curious about why they selected them, and, so, thank you.
Nope, absolutely. Andrea? Yes, that's you.
I have two things. I think I said before that I heard from a student that I had 47 years ago, and she's, she helps people in writing their memoirs. And I went through my old records, and I found a paper that she wrote in eighth grade, and I sent it to her. And I asked her if she had something that she could send to me. And she sent me this book that she edited, and part of, part of it is her own writing. It's just a wonderful gift. I'm sure Liz and everybody else here, whoever taught, would realize what a gift this is to receive from a student that you had. Her name is Alison DeGroot, and she lives in Massachusetts now. And the second thing that I have, what a gift that is, the second thing that I have is, I wanted to remind everybody that Martin Luther King application time is now. It's online. I'm employing our guidance counselors to reach out to all students who are eligible, and I'm employing them to, all of the students who are eligible to, to apply.
I'll send that reminder personally.
Thank you, thank you.
Liz?
Nothing new to add.
So I, I don't have anything new in terms of the emails, but I, oh, Jay? I'm sorry, thank you, Liz.
Yes, I believe I received the same emails as everyone else.
And I apologize, Jay. I got, I got. Right, and so the one thing that I do want to, Bev, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I wasn't on the board when you did away with the cursive writing, but I heard, somebody came to the board meeting, and they were talking about why we did away with cursive writing. Maybe Susan, you could, on your board notes one week, maybe you can send me a little blurb, why we eliminated cursive writing from our curriculum, especially since the kids still have that sign stuff. I mean, the signature part, applications didn't go away. So I just was, you know, because a lot of people in the community, they are talking about, you know, the elimination of cursive writing and why we did that. Thank you.
So you see that as just as a report out versus having an agenda topic?
Whatever way you want to do it, fine with me.
Okay.
You can start with the board note.
She'll start with the board note, and if we want more, we can make more. That's not how I meant to say it, but I think you know what I mean. Rita?
Yes, I thought that we didn't teach it anymore, but now we reinstated it last year, and that they were doing cursive again in the schools. That's not the case?
So that is not on our agenda, and so Susan will report out to that.
Okay. I would like, you know, more so just in board notes.
Okay.
To talk about it at a meeting. Thank you.
Absolutely. I do need to, and I, I think I've, I've sent everyone a, specifically this morning, an email that tomorrow, the Education Committee for the RTM is at 6:00 having a meeting. It is actually a meeting with the board about our budget that is, that is going to be coming to them really soon, once the Town Council has approved the budget, the whole budget. And also, there's a list of many other things that come on that. We were made aware of it today, but it is tomorrow at 6:00. I know that Susan and her staff have made some adjustments, and they are going to be there. But I would hope that many of us could at least go by Zoom to be supportive and to answer any of their questions about our budget and also the other things. And so for those of us who want to attend in person, it is at Thrive, Thrive 55 and/or a Zoom meeting. And I am going to try to join at 7:00 after my, my work.
Question?
Yeah.
We made a presentation before the Town Council about possibly adding some items that have not gotten to their budget. Are we going to do that again with the RTM, asking them if they would add back in some things, fields, et cetera?
They added it to their agenda. So all those CIP, from fields to bleachers, all of that is listed. I'll make sure, I'll resend that to make sure you all received that.
Thank you very much.
There's all the meetings for May that are on, that are on. I have an agenda item for the, the cursive writing, and we're going to need to add the communication plan to the agenda as well. Is that true, Matthew?
Pardon?
To add the communication plan to?
God willing, on the quick, no worries.
All right. I would, I actually have an item for communication. I am wondering if, if we could have some discussion with Rebecca Bias around how do we get the good news of, of the Groton School District out to the realtors and to other businesses, because oftentimes, they're not talking, they don't know a lot about our district and the good things that we're doing here. So it's hard to sell the district to the families, and I'm just wondering if that's a way of outreach. And so I kind of wanted to see what the Communication Committee thought about that. Rita, I see that your hand is raised.
Yes, and I'm really happy you're, you finishing that, Kim, because the real estate agents have listing our schools that are closed as sending schools from different areas of town. So that, that's a good thing to reach out to them. The other thing that I was going to, gosh, ask you about, oh, yes, when is the special meeting to recognize our teachers? You said we were going to, we were going to have two meetings in May?
That, yes, and so, thank you, thank you for talking about that. It is going to be our second committee of the whole meeting, and it is, it is actually on there, it says Groton Middle School Cafe. Is that what?
Okay.
And that is our committee of the meeting, and that is solely dedicated to recognizing the teachers and the people who get recognized at that meeting.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other agenda items? All right. Rita, your, your hand is still up. Do you have more?
Oh, no, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. All right, so here we are. I now will bring us back to under, under number six, number A, which is the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And I'm glad that our, our new data person is back. Thank you for coming back. And so, Susan, I am now going to turn the meeting over, this portion of the meeting, to you.
Okay, so I wanted to start out by thanking Dr. Piazza and Lauren Cassini. They've worked side by side as we've plowed through state data, and we've worked with our Alliance District support person from the Connecticut State Department of Education. They actually have a very vital website that has charts and graphs. It's very interesting. If you start playing around, I'll give you the link, so if you want to really check out how, how Groton's data looks compared to other places and over the years. One of the things that we know to be true is that the data that I'm going to be talking about tonight, mostly, is from 21-22. And it actually takes a full calendar year to go through all that data. So we start, our children take the assessments in the spring. They're just getting ready to do the Sback assessments at both the middle school and the elementary schools, three through five, and then six through eight. They also take an NGSS science assessment in grades three, five, eight, and then 11. SAT is our state assessment for high school for EL. SAT is our state assessment for high school for ELA and mathematics. And there was an SAT day that has already taken place and a makeup day. And really, one of the big accomplishments that we always strive for is participation rate. Really looking at ninety-five to a hundred percent participation rate is what we want, because we want all kids to be able to take these assessments so that we have the information. The information is kind of a once-a-year summative assessment in all of these things. So it's really important that we compare year to year. We look at cohorting, so children that have been with us over time and see how they're doing. And we're going to go into the data that we've received a little deeper tonight. One of the pieces of information that I sent everybody was the district profile and performance report. We used to call it a strategic school profile. And I can remember even being a principal and writing the narrative. Now I'm a superintendent and write the narrative. So, um, but it really ties into some of the data we've already seen. Um, you know, we look at the enrollment data. I know that, um, we did a deep dive, um, last week with the chronic absenteeism. We also report to the board, I just sent out a report today as a matter of fact, on expulsion and suspension. So we, we make sure the board is very cognitive, cognizant of, you know, the students that are, you know, being expelled and what are those reasons. Um, we, we look at the educators, the number of educators that we have, um, the attendance for both students and staff, as you did the other night. Um, we look at college and career readiness. And I have to tell you that college and career readiness is really all about students and taking career pathway courses, taking IB courses, AP, um, UConn credits. And one of the biggest jobs we have as a district is to make sure that we have the right coding from the state in power schools. So our kids are getting credit and we're getting credit for their good hard work. We've actually doubled some of our numbers in these higher level courses, as you know, from last year to this year. And our career pathways are growing, especially with the careers program being launched from IB. We have Ajit from the state coming down to talk to us with the military folks about getting credit for students who join the military. They have not really figured out how to account for those students. Um, it's different than college board where we can see what colleges kids are going to and if they're staying in. So I look forward to that conversation. We'll let the board know when he does come to town to talk about how we can, really with the Navy. The Navy will be there with us too. It will be part of our military superintendent's, um, meeting that, um, I know Dr. Ackerman attends and our principals attend. So really being very careful about making sure that things are coded properly so that we get credit. The same thing holds true with arts access, for instance, because we do offer a lot of arts classes. I just want to make sure that they've been coded properly so that we are getting, um, those numbers calculated accurately. We look at students with disabilities. We look at high needs and non-high need students and all students. So high needs represent students that are English language learners. They also represent socioeconomics, low socioeconomics, free and reduced lunch, students with disabilities. And so they're kind of all put together as called high needs. And then we look at how do they do compared to all of our students? And that's what we've, you've often heard of as a, a learning gap. How big is that gap between those students with specific needs and then all of our students? They, they also dig deep in this particular report on how much we're spending per pupil and we've talked about that at the board level. Um, what we're spending on special education. And then, you know, they go into, what are some of the academic features that we have? Those assessments that I just plotted out for you. And what is the district performance index, which is looking at kind of, um, singularly the performance of students in those grades three through eight and also eleven. Physical education is really important. I mean, this, this report, I just have to tell the board, because when I first came to Groton in twenty-fourteen, I was so impressed with your yardstick. Groton had a yardstick that really measured more, measured academic success, but measured beyond academics. The board was always interested in what were the kids doing after school? What sports were they playing? What clubs did they go to? We actually, I can remember trying to figure out how to calculate it, especially when we had enrichment programming at the elementary and we were fording that. So, um, they were looking at attendance back then and, um, I think our Board of Education was a little ahead of their time. And when the state decided to look more deeply at all these other areas, I was thrilled, because I said, this is going to give us information that can really help support our students and families. So, um, physical fitness, we have seen, um, a dip in performance and actual participation. I, I'm going to turn this section over, because I know Lauren Cassini and Dr. Piazza have talked to the health PE folks to really help them to understand some of the changes coming down the pike. And then help also with the, um, calculating the data and making sure that all kids who can perform and participate will be participating. So if you wanted to add something about that meeting that you've just recently had, that would be really helpful.
So, I'm sorry. So, this state has changed its requirements, um, for reporting purposes on the fitness assessment. So in the past, they looked at like groups of students, schools, um, and now this year they're both.
Excuse me, Kim. Can she talk closer to the microphone? Please?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
You're going to have to really, you're going to have to project your voice. You've got great information. We just want to make sure we're hearing it.
I'll be honest, no one has ever told me that I'm too quiet. So this is, this is something. Um, so really the state has, I'll repeat what I had said, the state has changed its, uh, policies for, for reporting on fitness. So instead of looking at groups of students, um, gender, uh, schools, they're looking at individual students and they're tracking individual student progress now. Um, and with that comes difference in some coatings. We're including students now that weren't necessarily included in the past, uh, which will really play into our participation rate. So if you look at where it says, I don't know if you're on this page yet.
Page?
You may not be, it's okay. When we get to it, I'll show you, but they're, they're looking at two pieces for fitness. The participation, how many of our students are, are actually taking the assessment? And then how are they performing on the assessment?
Which page?
The page that's projected on the screen right now is page six in your program there? Just so you can have a reference.
It's a separate sheet. It's actually a separate, um, wow.
It is a separate sheet.
Attachment.
It's attachment number two.
Attachment as well? Okay.
But I think what you're talking about is probably page four, which is the physical fitness test. Is that correct, correct, on our district, um, profile, which is not up on the screen?
Yep, well, it's part of both pages. So really it just comes down to, it's, it's another indicator in how we're measured as a district, um, of how we're preparing our students for success in life. And it's based on, like I said, those two pieces. So we're going to see some, some shifts. Ideally, students who may not have participated in the assessment in the past, um, will now be participating with assessments that fit their, their needs.
So especially for special education students, that there are modifications, like we do in classrooms, we modify the work so that they can be successful. The same is true in physical fitness. And, um, if a student has been injured, for instance, they might have a doctor's note and they can't participate. But because the length of time that you can do this assessment is throughout the year, should they recover and will hopefully recover, that we can certainly then assess. So I think it's really putting into place more opportunities for our students to show their performance. So another thing that we're always very curious about is how are our students prepared for college and career readiness and what happens to them once they've graduated? So we do collect that data. We've also talked about doing something like a survey for our students. We talked about that today, as a matter of fact, at the central office level, to really collect data from our students about how well they were prepared. A lot of districts I've been in have had, especially during homecoming, when kids come back, an opportunity for students to come to the high school and meet with other students and meet with us to get, how are things going? And I think that is something that I would really love to see happen more, um, precisely, like really to make a commitment towards that. So we can find out from the students themselves how well they are prepared. Um, and then, you know, we look at both eleventh and twelfth graders. And one of the things we've seen, noted is that eleventh grade, um, we see kids really working hard. And then twelfth grade, they're, they might not be taking as many courses. So we've talked about that in policy and graduation, um, you know, requirements. But I think really another thing, um, Dr. Piazza and I have talked about is meeting with some eleventh graders. Like we've done the coffee chats to open up the doors, to have some of our high school students come in and just talk to us about the things that they've taken in eleventh grade and what they're hoping to accomplish in twelfth. Um, so those are, you know, that gives you kind of a real plethora of all the different things that are being measured at the state level and information that comes back to us. Because it's, while it's summative and it tells us where we are at a moment in time or a year in time, it's also formative. It tells us something that will help us to identify a problem. And you can't solve a problem before you've identified it. So this is really a way, you know, um, some of it is good news and some of it is not so good news. I'll be very honest with you. Um, we look at this very cautiously. We look at this as if, what can we do better? All the time. So I just want the board to realize that. Um, and then if you want to read the wonderful outstanding narrative, it talks about our Groton twenty-twenty plan and beyond and all that has been accomplished in the past few years, especially last year, um, you know, and, but they give you limited space, so I can't be too wordy. And then, um, I'm bringing you to, attention to, um, this particular page, which is page six, but this is the annotated version, which came out as, um, an, an attachment for you. Yeah. So I will, um, turn it over to Dr. Piazza and to, um, you know, Lauren Cassini. But one of the things, when you look at this, you look at the top section, which is the ELA Performance Index, which we have, we started going over with the board probably back early fall. And then there's the growth model, which we're going to explain a little more carefully tonight. And so the top half really shows you the academic data and then into the, um, English language proficiency for the English language learners. And then some of those other data points that we've just, I've spoken of that are more universal, that are more like the, um, yardstick.
So, uh, well, I do have two board members online that want to ask questions. And so I'm going to recognize those two and, um, you can kind of say, well, I plan to explain that and then whatever. But so I'm going to recognize, um, Rita and then Bev.
Thank you. Um, Susan, a couple of years ago with Dr. Viner, um, I had brought back, I told him about a program, a software that I thought you were going to purchase about post-secondary, how to track, you know, graduate, children that have graduated or students and where, what are they doing? And are they in college? Are they in the military? I thought we purchased that. Maybe, maybe we didn't. There is software that is out there that you could buy and, um, easily track these students if they, you know, just would reply to whatever was sent to them.
I have Dr. Kennedy here, so I'm looking at him and I think we'll investigate that.
Yeah, I think it's.
That would make it easier.
To do.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bev?
Thank you. And my, my question is here quick. With this, Susan, this is preparation for CCR. What does CCR mean? I can't find that.
College and Career Readiness.
Okay, thank you.
And that, that's not only college. Beverly, I want to really make sure that the community understands that we're really looking for kids to find those career pathways as well. And it, sometimes that means that they might need college right after they graduate and sometimes it doesn't. So we're really trying to be more open-minded about what that really looks like.
And I think, just to piggyback on what you were saying, on what you were saying, um, in terms of the post-secondary entrance, which is again, one of those indicators, I believe that's also on the table for discussion with Ajit when he comes, in terms of our military population and how that, that is their career, yet we may not necessarily be getting credit for that. So that is, again, another agenda item for them.
Right.
Thank you.
Do you want me to just, okay. So if you're looking at this document, what the, there was, you were just given a ton of information in a small packet, a lot of data, uh, to go through. And really what we tried to do here was just make some of that information digestible and pull out the key pieces, the things you probably need to be able to focus on the best and, and we'll really kind of sum up what the work we're doing today. So when you think about the accountability results, this is really how we're measured by the state and how our students are performing, how we're doing with teaching them and them learning. And the accountability report has different components. It's, it's based on a score that we're given, okay? And each indicator, so there's twelve different indicators that we look at. And you can see those are listed. So our ELA, maths, our academic performance, our academic growth, like Susan had mentioned, um, chronic absenteeism, our, uh, language learners, how we're doing with graduation rates, things like that. All of those are part of that. Those, it, those are considered the index indicators for coming up with that score. Okay?
Before you go any further, could we just make sure that, um, that the board, plus anyone that's, um, listening or watching us, know what the high needs, the difference that when we get into those topics?
Yep.
To, to identify what the high needs would be like? What's the definition of that?
Yep.
Thank you, friend.
No problem. Um, so based on those indicators, yes, they are broken up into different groups and they're actually, um, the weights can change a little bit, um, how we're scored. So when we talk about high need students, what they're really talking about are students that may, um, be identified as needing free or reduced lunch, students with disabilities, students, um, who are learning, uh, English as a second language or third language in some cases. Though, those students make up this, what we would consider high needs population. Um, and so it is broken down by all of our students in Groton. And then also a close look at that, because the whole point of this accountability report started with this achievement gap that has been really prevalent in Connecticut. But we have probably one of the largest gaps in Connecticut. Um, so to look at that information, that's why it was broken apart. Um, so what I want to do is just kind of walk you through, if you'll look at where it says index and rate, okay? That is the score that is used to determine our achievement, okay, in each of these different indicators. So our achievement in ELA, how we perform, our achievement in how they are growing in ELA, okay? Those are all different indicators. And the state has set a target. So in the column right next to what you see target, that's what the state, using different formulas for each piece, according to how things need to be measured, that's the target that is created by the state. Okay? And so that index is really, how close did we get to that target? That's really what that comes down to. And so when we look at the performance index as an example, it's looking at all of the performance, um, all of the summative assessments that we've done. What is our, um, how did, how did our students do, our overall achievement?
And that's our third graders through our eighth graders and our eleventh graders. So the eleventh grader's taking the SAT in English Language Arts and our, you know, elementary and middle school children taking, um, the S-Back, smarter, balanced.
And so you can see in the, in the column where it says points earned, that's what we as Groton, uh, Groton District have earned out of a total of, where you see your max points. And then the next piece, which is really important, where it says percentage of points earned. So if you look just as an example for ELA Performance Index, okay, all students, our index was sixty-six point one, okay, out of a possible seventy-five. We earned forty-four points out of fifty. And that's where that percentage comes from.
At eighty-eight percent.
Eighty-eight point one percent. And so then what happens is they add up all of our percentage points on this bigger scale, metric scale, and they find the average of those, uh, they find a percentage, I'm sorry, of those possible points for all of the indicators. And that's how they come to our tar, uh, our accountability number.
Which is seventy point four.
Which is.
Circled in yellow.
Yeah, it's circled in yellow at the bottom. And our target is eighty-five. So you're going to hear me mention different targets. Um, but overall, when we're looking at our district as a whole, all the indicators, we are shooting for eighty-five. That's our all the indicators, we are shooting for 85. That's our target number.
And that is statewide?
That is statewide.
Every single district in the state of Connecticut is going for the 75 for each one of the academic and a total of 85. That is everyone's target?
Yep.
Okay.
And so, just a compliment, and this is, this is a lot of information and we spend all day, every day, looking through this and making sense of it and talking it out and, and trying to prioritize, you know, how to tackle some of the things that we see in here that we need to improve upon. So we, this is a constant conversation. So for someone who may be looking at it for the first time or looks at it, you know, every, once every few months, it's, it can be overwhelming. So we, we just want to pull back and we want to look at two specific pieces right now and that's the Performance Index or our academic performance and our academic growth.
I also like to look at what the state averages because I, I'm, we're always compared, comparing ourselves to what the state mean is. So for instance, if you look at ELA Performance Index for all students, Groton is at a 66.1 and the state is 64.2. So we've done a little better than the state. So is that good enough? No, we're always looking to improve and to, to make, you know, do even better than that. So, but I think it is important to have some kind of benchmarking to say, so what does that really mean? So not only compared to the state, but also our Derg and also we've done this, brought this information to the board about local neighborhood, neighboring towns.
Kim, I was wondering if there's any more questions on this particular page or we can jump right into the PowerPoint?
I'm, Liz, yes.
Now, I don't know if this is the place to ask this question and if it's not, that's fine. But as I was going through here, I'm looking at where it says at the very bottom, right above Accountability Index, you see the thing that says arts access? I'm wondering why it's 57.9. I don't understand that number because quite frankly, every elementary school student, every middle school student has the opportunity or they give, in their curriculum, they're, they have music, art, whatever and at the high school, they have certain requirements for their graduation. So I'm wondering why that number is so low.
So look right next to it, to the 60%, that's the target. So that's what the state is saying is our target. So we're not too far from that target.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that's not my question. I don't care about the target. I'm caring about my kids. And I want to know why that is not a higher number? If we have an arts program that is so robust, what is that, what's not being reported? And you know?
I wanted to ask the superintendent.
Please also get into the microphone, not get into it, but.
I wanted to ask Superintendent Austin. It's my understanding that though art may be, and all of the electors may be offered at the middle level, you don't have to take them all. So it may be
Or at the high school.
I'm sorry.
Or at the high school.
Yes, but at the middle school and, and that's my question is, when did that happen? Well, actually, this is not the time for that, but that might be why, that might account for what you're
I'm just kind of wondering, you know, why, why it seems to me it's under-reported. That's all.
I'll look a little bit deeper into how that number is calculated.
I appreciate it.
Maybe even before the end of this meeting, but we'll get you that answer.
Thank you.
So the arts access, do you want me to answer?
Absolutely.
So the arts access is determined by, again, for each one of these, there's specific criteria.
I can't hear her.
She's got it. She, Beth, I don't know if you can see the smile that's on her face is that she's like, when she realizes she's talking and people are not hearing her, so she's working on it.
So again, each indicator has a specific criteria for how it's scored. And in terms of art access, it's the percentage of students in grades nine through 12 specifically participating in at least one dance, theater, music, visual arts, media arts course in the school year. So in each school year. That's
Okay. That makes more sense.
The indicator. So now to follow, I'm sorry, to follow up with that though, please keep in mind that we have been working with a consultant on our programs of study, scheduling, to make sure that things are accurately coded the way they should be so that specific courses are coded. If it's, could fall into more than one place, it's falling into the right place. So it does count for what it needs to. So ideally, you know, that will be 100% accurate and so that our numbers may look a little different.
So I just want to clarify, are you saying the arts access is only the high school?
So that's not, so this, I guess then my question is, this profile is not just the three through eight and the 11? When it comes to
Right, yeah, there's certain things.
So it, certain things like even the college and career readiness and the four-year graduation, those all pertain to the high school. The high school has the heaviest lift on, lift on this accountability index, I have to say.
The three through eight and 11 is specific to the academic performance?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe that needs to be indicated on this chart.
Chronic absenteeism is for everybody though, you know? So there are some things that are K through 12.
Yes.
And you're here with this moving out of the
Anybody have any other questions?
No, Matthew has a question.
If this is not the right time to do it, just tell me and I'll circle around later. But I was looking on page two at the educators by race and ethnicity and my reason was that in the spring of 22, data was provided to us for the 2019, 2020 progress on diverse, staff diversity. The numbers that are here are arrayed differently than what was done on this chart. I don't, you're obviously not going to see the numbers on it, but this is kind of the way that chart was given to us. I can show it to you later. So what I would like to ask is if we could get updates on the figures that we have. I understand this is a state report, but could we come up with coding the state figures for 2020, 21 and 2021, and 2021, 22 in the same format so that we can do some analysis of the rates of our progress and I'll show you the data forms later.
Well, was that specifically related to, I apologize?
This, it, it, district level, in-school admin, PK five, six to eight, nine to 12, American Indian, Asian American, African American, Hispanic, et cetera. And we broke that out and I think it's a great document and I, for consistency's sake, if we can array this state data in the same format, then we'll have three years' worth of data we can look at and see what our progress is like.
Perfect.
We also have a district profile and performance report for each school year even prior. But I think looking at this information, we could probably even do some, you know, look at this current year, but have it arranged that way just to see forward thinking. Yeah.
We also have on our template, I think actually in June or July, where every year we're going to have a conversation around our hiring and also our diversity. And this might be a really good add-on to kind of take a look at the flow of, of that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Rita?
Yes, my, my question was about chronic absenteeism and for our high-needs students. It says we didn't receive any points at all and I was curious why. I mean, even our, all our students chronic, it's low, but for the high-needs, it just has a point earned as a zero. So I was just curious.
I need to go back and look at that. I think as we had a significant spike, but I do need to go back and look at that before. Can I add that to the notes that I sent out?
Sure.
Because I don't want to give you an answer that's not accurate.
Right, thank you.
This is a lot to digest. I appreciate your patience and your good questions.
This has been a long time since we've been able to do this. So, but Dean, do you have a question?
Yeah, before we move on to the state assessment results, I did also have a few observations
Sure.
regarding the, the profile. When I first joined the board, I think it was the fall of 21, but you know, mists of time. I think it was a combination of either data that I was provided and data that I found myself on the SD website. I think the, how it's arranged on their website is a little different now. But I noticed a few things here. They're in no particular order, so forgive me.
What page are you on, Dean?
I'm starting on page one.
Okay.
So under District Information, it has, for example, the enrollment figure, the top left of the page. Enrollment figure, per pupil expenditures and a total expenditures. If my math is correct, if you multiply the 4113 by the 18,000, you are 7 million short of the 82. Now, I'm not a fan, except as a, like an armchair exercise of taking the total Board of Ed budget anywhere and dividing it by the number of students and then saying that's the per pupil expenditure because there's a sort of a fixed base in that figure that has no relationship to your enrollment. So it's a little unfair to, unless you're a huge district, which we are not in comparison with, say, New Haven or New York City or Boston. It, it starts to skew things a little bit, but I am curious, how, how did you know to exclude or how does the state know wherever the number comes from to exclude about $7.5 million from the 82 million to then do the division to get the per pupil? What's the criterion for doing that? Because if you left, if you just left it as 82 million and divided by the number of students, you'd get something that's just shy of $20,000 per student as an expenditure. And is this, whatever the methodology is, is this used across the board for all school districts in the state so we can do an apples to apples? When people say, well, this is how much they spend, is how much they spend. Is it in fact the same, you know, adjusted on the same basis? And if you don't know now, that's, that's fine.
Ken, do you know how the formula is?
I do know.
Okay, so maybe we can give that
This is on page one, under enrollment, are you looking?
It's under District Information.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, the upper, upper left-hand side. The other thing that I noticed, and this is a perennially touching subject, I'll start with this. Under chronic absenteeism and suspension slash expulsion, no rates given for female. And I know the asterisk means data suppressed to safeguard student confidentiality. The guy numbers are there, but the female numbers are not. And I bring this up because what struck me in 2021 was when I compared the same figures, boys to girls, if I may use that terminology. In Groton, and I don't remember what year it was, it was the fall of 2021. It must have been at least a year old at that point. It may have been the 2019 to 20, so at least up until March and then everything shut. That was 2020, then everything shut down. But the number that popped out, the ratio that popped out was that the, the boys were disciplined. And by discipline, I mean the suspension and expulsions that reported to the state. Otherwise the SD wouldn't have that, that data. But the, the discipline rate for the boys was 2.4 times the discipline rate of the girls. Shocker. But that, you know, applying the, the modern methodology of there's a gap and there can be only one explanation, one would have to conclude. Also, before I go any further, I see male, female, non-binary, but the female non-binary are asterisks. We've got black or African-American, Hispanic or Latino of any race, white. In other categories, we have all of the other state-defined races. So I do not see where the Asians come in on this one or the American Indians or the Aluts or the Hawaiians or anybody else that we have. I know we have a fair number of Asians of all different parts of Asia. I don't see them in here unless I'm, I'm just not seeing it. So that's, I find that interesting.
Well, you can see, you, you see the discrepancy when you look above at the enrollment and how it's communicated by breaking out and then it's not done the same way.
Right, so I don't know, I don't know how they're faring. Since we are curious about black versus Hispanic versus white, we don't seem to be curious, at least on this table with how those three groups are faring against everybody else. So, you know, I'm, the other thing that I'm thinking about is when you look at, and then we don't have a breakdown by, under educators by gender. We have it by ethnicity. Now we can, you would consider how the school system, and we're not alone. Education, education has traditionally been, and I mean tradition by small T, just, you know, regularly been in the past and presently. It tends to be a female-dominated sort of a system. Lots of, I mean, most of my elementary school teachers, and I don't know what the ratio was in high school, were women. The administrators, as few as they were in those days, were probably mostly guys. But I bet if you did a head count in our district, look at the administrators, look at the faculty, look at their staff, I think you'd find it's very female-heavy. Now, on the one hand, what's the difference? On the other hand, when you consider that in Connecticut, one out of three homes with kids are mother-only. That's one out of three. For some groups, it's a lot higher than that. One could argue that we have a very high discipline problem with the males. It's not reflected here, but that the boys don't have any role models at home and don't have any role models in school. So I want to know what we're going to do to address the, what I think is the gender imbalance in our faculty, K or pre-K through 12. So just throwing that in for the mix. What else did I want to say? Yeah, so I don't see all the information that, you know, one might be curious about because clearly some comparisons are made and there's data, but it isn't complete. So we're being asked to be curious, but not too curious.
You want to make a suggestion? I'll get it to Ajit when he comes down. Are there things that you feel are missing that you want to know about that maybe is not on this report? But it's, it's certainly things that we could investigate.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, there's, there's data and from the data, we are supposed to draw certain conclusions, but we don't have all of the data. And I want to make sure if we draw certain conclusions, we draw as accurate conclusions as we can draw.
So I guess if you have, actually, if anyone has questions about this and want the superintendent to, to talk directly to Ajit, that would be great.
So is this format here where you plug in numbers or is this? So you, basically you, you report the numbers that they're asking you to report?
They actually take the numbers right from Power School and, you know, they really take them or have them. They sometimes have the numbers before we have the numbers. So whether it's the state assessments, you know, we really get our numbers through the state on that.
Yeah. I'll tell you something else. When I was given the data again when I joined, and I don't remember what grades it was, but it had to do with math proficiency and language proficiency. And it ranked the races. It also did the same thing, and I got to pull that paper out. It did the same thing with discipline. It ranked them high to low. And white, Hispanic, black is what you saw. I don't remember whether your Canadian, American Indians fell, you know, fell in. Asian was put at the bottom. So it was all numerically ordered till you got to the Asians because if you hadn't ordered it numerically, the Asians would be at the top.
As far as performing?
As far, as far as math and math proficiency and language proficiency, they were easily 10 points ahead of the white students. And again, this, I'm just going by the state's classification because I personally detest the classification. You know, I grew up, we probably all did, where the world is comprised of four different colors and then a mix of the four colors. It's absurd. But I understand why the state does that and we have to go along with the state.
Any more questions about this?
Yeah, no, I know you want to corral me. That's fine. I understand you've got a job to do. But no questions about this one. If you want to detail where I think the data is missing, I'll be glad to provide you the report.
I would love to see that, Dean. So please do share that.
Could I, could I ask that as you get the data that I had asked for earlier, that we could get some gender bases to in faculty?
Yes, absolutely. That's always a curious question for me because I do agree with you. I feel that in education, it's more of an 80% female-dominated group, especially in elementary. But as you go through administrative and especially at the superintendency, it's only 20% female. So there's a big discrepancy about who's in the role teaching and then in administration and then, you know, I always like to see a nicer balance of things.
But just to speak to the ethnicity, looking at specific performance, academic performance by ethnicity that, that is on page four, it is not rank ordered, but just gives you a sense of how we are performing by ethnicity, by high-needs versus low-needs, by language learners. I don't know if that's what you were looking for.
Well, I mean, as I said, some information is provided by all the groups you traditionally see that the state breaks out, but that isn't consistent. For example, under chronic absenteeism and suspension expulsion, I had once seen the data on this. I had once seen the data on this. It is not in this table. It's basically the, the three big ones.
I will ask that question because I'm curious about that as well.
Yep, thank you, Dean.
And, and not by gender either. It's done, and I know that there's a huge differential, again. Shocker.
Yep.
And that gender for suspensions and expulsions, why there's no data available for the females, it's, they suppress it if it's anything lower than five percent. So less than five percent, they suppress it. That's according to the state site. That's, I just want to, I'm just trying to give you what I can.
That's a curious practice, but thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Susan, before you leave that area a second.
Okay.
This is, I just wanted to comment. Southeastern Connecticut, they have, we have a high proportion of female superintendents in our area. When you think of Stonington and Groton and New London and Clinton, it's, it's wonderful, I think.
And I would say, just in the past several years too, that has happened. So it is good to see. We definitely are better than the average.
Right.
As bal, as far as balancing. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. All right. So if we want to move on, I'd like for you, we're going to work from this document next. But I'd like for you to go to page three because I think it probably would make more sense.
To start with three.
Start with three. And the only reason I'm asking you to do that is because this, we, we started with that accountability index, looking at all those indicators and what our score is, right, as, as a district. What you're looking at here on the left side is that historical accountability index of the state. So how the state fares. And then on the right is Groton. So just for comparison purposes, again, just having that balcony view, right? Where do we, where do we lay in, in relationship to the state? And if you look, again, we're, we're always right, right within a few percentage points of or a few points of the state.
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus.
We did have a bump up in eighteen nineteen, if you see, beyond the state. But then I think you can see the decline. And I'm not making an excuse about COVID, but it did happen. So there was that decline that happened across the state. What I'd like to start seeing, what I think we'd all like to start seeing, is progress again and see these accountability indexes moving forward. And see our students making better progress with their, you know, index, their, their actual score, and then their growth over time. So that's what I think everybody is looking for.
Right. And the next few slides, because the slide right before this, we've already had that conversation. So I'll just remind you as we go on. So if you turn to the next slide, the performance index, again. So this is looking specifically at our English Language Arts performance, overall performance as a district, based on grades three through eight and then eleven for both English Language Arts and math, all right? It's an overall performance. It's not a percentage. It's based on an average of points. And our target for our performance index is seventy-five. So our whole accountability index target is eighty-five, just for performance. Where do we, where are our students in terms of, of how they're performing? That target is seventy-five. And just for your reference, that's indicators one A through F on that, that initial page we just looked at by the annotated page. And so you've actually looked at this information back in the beginning of the year, broken down by, in all, a variety of ways. So I just wanted to kind of re-center you to the, the work and give you, again, another balcony view of this. So this is in relationships, this is our English Language Arts. How we performed in comparison to the other school districts in our DIRG, which means, as a reminder, we're talking about school DIRGs. We're talking specifically about schools that are, are like us in terms of socioeconomic status. So when we look at our DIRG in terms of Language Arts performance, we are leading the pack.
I have to say, though, Vernon is a great colleague and competitor. I actually know their superintendent. We've talked about taking walkthroughs in each other's district. So it's, we're kind of neck and neck, and you'll see that, back-and-forth-ness. So I, I would say that networking with colleagues, you know, in our DIRG and outside our DIRG, in our, in our neighbors, with our neighbors, is really an, an essential ingredient to making progress.
And so again, that index was sixty-six point one for English Language Arts.
Is that grade-specific?
Nope, that's overall. Grades three through eight and then eleven.
Your predecessor explained, if I understood him correctly, that we were not to confuse the index with grade-level competency.
You need to bring your microphone closer.
Thank you very much, Mark. I'll repeat myself. If I understood your predecessor, the index was not to be confounded with the grade-level competency. But it had been of concern to me when I asked him if he could give a ballpark figure of what our score, I think it was seventy when I spoke to him? I'm not sure. He, he said, if I remember correctly, that we have about seventy percent of the kids reading at grade level. If I'm mistaken, please correct me, Susan. I'm not trying to mislead anybody.
I, I think he was trying to explain that these were not percentages.
And I, and I understood that, but I, I asked him if he could just give a ballpark figure of how we were to understand them in terms of competency compared to what minimum, give minimum standards or, or is that the right word?
Well, you can look at it in all those different ways. Yep, grade-level standards.
I understand this is a systemic situation around the country, that Groton is doing better than most districts. And the last thing I want to be construed as saying is that we're saying our teachers aren't doing their job. They clearly are. And yet, I'm concerned if in fact we have fifteen or twenty or twenty-five percent of kids who are in their latter high school years, who are reading below grade level, that's of concern for me in terms of their careers and future. So I just don't know how to understand this in terms of grade level. If this is not the time, if this is not the time to address that, please, let's make a time.
So we're going to be showcasing some all different kinds of data points that we use. We use universal screeners three times a year that really get to that, the heart of that matter. So we're going to be showcasing at least a, a dipstick for our early education, our primary kids. But we also have that with something called Lexia Power Up, which is ELA for the upper grades, middle school and high school. So those are all data points that we can share. And that'll give you, I think, a better understanding of, so what does that mean for Groton? How many students are at or above grade level, close to grade level or below grade level? That's how we look at it, almost like as a four-tiered layer cake.
And, and the, a complimentary question to this is, do these figures include 504 and IEP students? If they do, that would explain a good portion of why the grade level overall is low. But it's never been clear to me as to whether.
It's always about all of our students. They all participate. I mean, there might be certain IEPs that have kids participate in some measures and not others, you know? But mostly, they all participate. Even if it's with an alternative assessment through the state, that becomes more like a survey. So the teacher works with the child individually. But all kids, really, we want to know about them all.
Yeah, I, I hope we can have at some point a robust discussion.
Yep.
And at, at a later time, I'll leave it alone.
The question then would be, when can, when, when could we have those data? When would the data points about the, that layered cake, as you can see, I'm?
Right. So we can look at the, the actual month-to-month and, and find out. Right now, we've already done like a beginning of the year, middle year, and then we're getting ready to do a spring assessment after S-Bac. So at the very end of the year. So we should have the three pieces for ELA, for instance, with Lexia Power Up for the upper grades and with the Fontes and Penel and Dibbles for the lower grades.
We could, I could certainly get the information, like a percentage of our third-grade population that's at benchmark or above, meaning they're at their grade levels, they're meeting their grade-level standards or they're exceeding versus who is not. That information is easy, I can get that for you if you give me a few days, just because tomorrow's crazy. I'm happy to send that your way.
Well, we need to have an agenda item. Sorry, I just need to take a quick phone call. But I think we need to have a agenda item when we see that. So that we can have better discussion.
Okay.
Dean?
Thank you. It just occurred to me when you were talking about how this is an aggregate figure. It's the high needs versus everybody. It's, it's everybody in the same mix. And of course, there's a tendency to compare these figures with the state. How are we doing versus the state? How are we doing versus others? It, it strikes me that these are probably not adjusted figures. In other words, to compare us with other districts, us with the state average, you're presuming that all districts and the state have identical mixes of high needs and not high needs. Because if it's not the same number, if there's any significant difference between our district, we have a lower-than-average, much lower-than-average percentage or much higher average, then we would have to make an adjustment so we fairly compare ourselves, the way you would do a, a property appraisal. Who's got another, an extra half-bath kind of thing, you adjust up or down.
That's a good analogy.
But I don't know whether this is, obviously, that, that requires more work to do that. I can maybe do a rough back-of-the-envelope calculation based on the figures that I have of what percentage we have and kind of play around. But do, do you know whether we're comparing bars versus bars, numbers versus numbers? But inside those numbers, they're different mixes, significantly different mixes.
So that's why we use a district reference group because these districts, like the alliances, we are one of the last of the alliances. So we do top, we are a top performer in the alliance. But the DIRG results are really other districts very similar to Groton, not exactly, though. I mean, they still have differentials, like our special ed population is close to twenty percent in our district.
Right.
So if we looked across, you know, at these others, that would be really an interesting study to see how all these other features that we're examining impact the other districts.
Because I think when we're talking about educating, clearly the high-needs kids, especially kids that have, that require special programs, we're not simply talking about socioeconomics, but kids who already come to school, you know, with, with, with issues that have to be dealt with, like that cognitive issues, for example. That's, not to go back to tracking kids differently, but that, that, that's, you know, we should, we should be comparing the, the non-special needs, if you will, to the non-special needs. How are we doing there? Because, and then we can look at how are our special need kids doing, as opposed, you know, versus the other special? How are we doing with other districts in that area?
So that is actually a category, Dean?
Is it?
Of non-high needs. So there are high needs, there are non-high needs, there is everybody. So they do disaggregate that data in, in that way as well for us to take a look at.
Thank you.
So again, the next slide is the same concept only for math. So how we are performing in relationship to the districts that are most like us. And again, as Susan had mentioned, our biggest competitor, Vernon, the one we're most like, I should say, is just above us, less than one percent above us for math. And again, that's specific to performance.
And again, that's with the state's set goal of seventy-five. So I think, you know, to echo what Susan was saying earlier, you know, we balance the fact that, you know, we're happy to see where we lie in comparisons to the DIRG with the knowledge that we have a lot of work to do to improve.
And to get to that seventy-five.
And Dean, you said it also, you know, we acknowledge all the work that our teachers have done and I think the teachers acknowledge too that there's still, you know, a lot of work to do.
Also, our schools get an actual target number. So we do have Northeast Academy, for one, has met their target in certain areas. So you do see across the district, you know, that the schools perform in a different way as well. This is all an average of all the kids, you know, that are tested in all of our schools. But it can break down in that site, I know a few of you would like to get on and I'll, I'll give you the link. But it's really incredible how it breaks it apart, and you can see a lot more detail.
I'm going to recognize Rita.
Rita, you're being recognized?
Yes, thank you. I was curious about, did we, we didn't go over the Connecticut Schools of Distinction for High Growth. Did we, Charles Barnham and Northeast?
Not yet, but we're ready to. They're coming up soon.
I thought you skipped it?
No, we didn't want to skip that.
That's a great lead-in, Rita.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you. And I did, I was curious about the seventy-five and how it does say that it's not a percentage point, it's a target.
That's right.
And it would be interesting to see how many districts in the state are above or at seventy-five. Is it just the, you know, the Grenages and the Westport? Or are there many other towns that are also at seventy-five and above?
And, and you bring up a good point. It's not only as a district, but there are schools in different communities that are performing at different rates as well.
Yes.
And I do have to say that I've, I've done a lot of research in this area. Rick Collenberg was a doctor who came to us back when we were building the one middle school. And his work is all around socioeconomics and balancing socioeconomics in schools and how, if that's done carefully, that is really a win-win for all kids. So.
Thank you.
All right. So then now we're shifting not to a number target, but to a percent target. Just if you feel like you're getting a handle on things, they throw us another curveball.
So academic growth is a little bit different in the sense that we're looking at specific students and how they're, how they're progressing over time, okay? So these specific targets are focused on grades four through eight for S-Bac because you need more than one data point in a specific assessment to create, to create a growth target and to see how much you, you can grow in that timeframe, okay? The, the target is always a hundred percent. Ideally, all of our students would make their growth target every year. So our target is one hundred percent. And the district academic growth is calculated by finding the average percentage of growth target achieved. And so I'm going to try my best to help you understand that, maybe give you a little, a little visual to help with that because I know some of this can be, I have to remind myself, right? Like I have to literally say what it is in my own head, and I look at this all the time. So in terms of high growth, we had two schools that were recognized as schools of distinction for high growth. And the first one was Charles Barnham, which showed high growth of all students in math and of our high-need students. So they had significant growth in both all students and high-need students for math. And in order to become a school of distinction, you have to be within the top ten percent of the schools in the state in terms of the amount of growth you've made. So it's, it's quite an accomplishment to have two schools up there. Northeast Academy, their high growth was in terms of ELA, so English Language Arts, and it was for all students. So that's, that's quite an accomplishment. So as we go into this, I know you, you've heard about the percentage of the target achieved. I just wanted to give you like a mental picture to try to help kind of sort it all out. And this is really what I do in my own head, like I've said. But there are two things that we look at and the state looks at. One is the growth rate. So every child in third grade takes the S-Bac math, okay? And then they take it again in fourth grade. So how they perform in third grade, there are scale scores. So they're given a score. It could be one, two thousand four hundred thirty-two as an example. It's a scale score. And based on that number, where they fall, and that's where that proficiency you were asking about comes in. So there's four different levels of performance. And so based on where they're performing and what that scale score is, they're given a, a target of what they're expected to grow by the following year, okay? And so that growth rate is how many of our third gr, our fourth grade students met the target they were given based on how they performed. target they were given based on how they performed in third grade. So as an example, and this is just, just as an example to give you like a visual, four students, two make their growth target, they met that number, two did not. That's 50% is our growth rate, okay? What's included in the accountability index is the second part on the right-hand side, which is the percentage of target achieved. And so when you think of that, think about the two students who met it, met their target, and the two students who did not. How did they fare in relationship? Because to just look if they, if they met their growth target isn't enough, because we could have some kids that are one point away from making it. Doesn't matter, you're not going to see that. We could have some kids that made it only by one point, point, by the skin of their teeth. You're not going to see that here either. So the, the percentage of the target achieved gives us a better idea as to how we are moving kids forward.
And while the target is 100%,
Yeah.
There are kids who can go, go over that and get 110%, just to make it a little more complicated.
So as an example, if a third grader scores, has a scale score of X, they're expected to make 30 points growth the following year. They could make 37 points, so that's over 100%, right? And so it's calculated that way. And so what they do at the state level is they take all the students and how their percentage of their growth target met. Was it over 100%? Was it under? And then they average those together, and that's where our number comes from for growth on that page six you were looking at.
And for those two students who didn't make it, you know, you see one that might have made 65%, not 100%, or 75%. You might even have someone make 99%. That's that one point below.
Right.
So they're looking at every single child and the number of points and the percentage of growth. And then you might show them the average, because I think it's a simple average, but taking these four sample students that we've identified, and, you know, one with the 110, one with 100%, one with 65 and 75, and then adding it together, divide by four, which would give you the 87.5% average. Of course, we have more than four students, but this is just trying to keep it as simple as possible with smiley faces.
Why are they all smiling?
I know, I thought about that. Why didn't, why didn't they get it, you know?
They should be a little more concerned.
And so just to give you, again, a better understanding of how we are performing in Groton, we have historical academic, academic growth data for all students, and we have the historical data for high need students.
And this is all in ELA?
This is all, yeah, this is all English Language Arts. And again, just as a reference, the state level for all students, where we were performing at 63%, the state was performing at 60.4, meaning we were about 2 and a, 2 and 1/2%, a little bit more than that, over the state average, okay?
And we were also above the state for high needs.
Yep.
High needs was 56.2%.
Yeah, so we were over 3% higher than the state average, so, for our high needs kiddos.
So whether it's growth, or whether it's, you know, that, that one data point, we really look to see those bars growing
Right.
Over time.
Yeah. And so the next slide, again, just going back, we looked at it in terms of performance index. This is in terms of growth, where we're coming out in, in relationship to other like schools, so other schools in the DIRTTG with our 63%.
Have they set a three or five-year target for what they're liking, where they hope schools will be?
So we have what's called the ESSA milestones, and so it's actually a 13-year plan, and so it's, and the idea is based on a cohort, right? It takes a cohort 13, 13 years with kindergarten to get out of it. But it adjusts every year, so where, where we fall, that number might adjust, but the goal is always to get to that same place at the end of the 13 years.
And again, note that's ESSA, she said E-S-S-A, which stands for the Every Student Succeeds Act.
I believe.
We presented, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to freshen you up, but we, we presented those in the past, if you remember, with the dotted lines.
Yeah.
And so we still have those that we can share later.
Is that 75? Is that the figure that they were looking for?
That was the target for the
For the performance, yes.
Performance, yeah.
Yep, Dean?
Yeah, again, going back to this table, the, the historical aspects, the prior page, this is us, this is Groton
Yes.
Over these year periods, of course, there's a gap, I understand that. But this is an example of there's all students in high needs. There's no non-high needs table, maybe because it's, but crowd things on the page. But again, this, this sort of presumes that in any, you know, as you go from year to year to year to compare, that our mix of high needs and non-high needs is substantially the same. No, no variation that would really throw anything off. So if you were to compare year to year to year, it's a fair comparison. But that's, that's a presumption. I don't know whether it's a rebuttable, well, it is a rebuttable presumption if I had other numbers, but I have no way to rebut it.
When they are looking for the gap, they are looking at all of the students versus the high needs
Yes.
In the gap, to show the gap. So the closer we are with our high need students and all students, the better it is to not have that big a gap. But you could also look at high needs versus non-high needs too, to see where that variation is as well.
Well, that would have to be, that would be a bigger gap, and it would be more alarming, concerning, whatever, whatever, you know, however you want to phrase it. I don't know whether the goal ultimately is for high need students to perform at the same level as non-high need students. It really all depends on how you define, you know, which subsegment of the high needs you're, you're talking about. But there will always be this gap here. I think maybe we're not showing the non-high needs because we're afraid to look at that difference and what that might say, what people might take away from that.
But I have seen it that way as well, non-high needs.
We could certainly tease that out.
Tease that out.
But to be clear, just because a child happens to be classified as a high needs doesn't mean they, I mean, there are certainly high need students that are outperforming some of our non-high need students too.
Yeah, these are gross, aggregate categorizations where we think there are factors present that might affect their ability to perform in school. I get that.
Exactly, Dean. You got that right.
So I have a hypothesis that high need, I have the hypothesis that high needs is the wrong metric to be looking at, because it, I think perhaps a better metric would be if we said those students who are IEP and 504, who have individualized plans and individualized targets, certainly we do everything with all students together, but we disaggregate those students and include high need students who are not IEP and not 504 as a part of a general population to see what kind of progress they're making in the non-IEP 504. That may not make sense to you, I'd love your feedback.
We actually look at that, that's really important data that we look at, and we monitor it probably ever so carefully in special education, because every special education student meets at least once a year with the team, sometimes more than that, sometimes multiple times, to look at their data across even more than state data. They have more ways to track data and chart data, and they keep it really on a platform, and they're, they're actually evaluated based on what the IEP is looking for and their, their targeted specific goals for each individual child. That's why it's called an IEP, an Individual Evaluation Plan. So it is something really important that we do on a regular basis for our special need students and our 504s.
So what would that look like? Would you like to see, would that disaggregated out?
Well, if you, if one accepts the hypothesis that just because somebody gets a free and reduced lunch, meals, does not necessarily an indicator of academic competence, you know, that that's not an indicator of academic competence. And we know that there are socioeconomic factors that play in this, we just can't disaggregate that. But if we looked at those disaggregated and put aside 504 and IEP, not to forget about them, but just to put them aside for this particular analysis, and then looked at all the other students together, how would they be performing, both in terms of growth and academic performance? Because the ones who are IEP and 504 are getting the individual attention they need, God willing. And how are we, how are we addressing whatever shortfalls we might have amongst those who do not have those particular disabilities?
That'd be interesting to look at. I think I saw you write down a note, so let's see what happens. Thank you, Matthew.
Did we, did we look at this? I think we looked at this, right? The academic growth, again, by DIRTT. And then here is same information, but specific to math, so our math growth. And really, I mean, in terms of math growth, really doing phenomenal in terms of, like, in the grand scheme of things, how we're, how we're growing in relationship to how the rest of the state is growing in comparison.
What was that state number for all students?
So for all students, in 21, 22, the state average was 65.2. So we're like over 5% above the state average.
And our high needs is really something to celebrate.
And our, and our students who are grouped with high needs, the state average was 59.1%. And Groton was 9% above that, 68.1%. So something, those, those are big gains, and especially as we're, they're taking on this new curriculum. I mean, there's a lot of other pieces that you really need to be thinking about in the professional development that's been happening around it, some really big gains.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment. This, you know, we've been concerned about the, what's happened as a result of COVID and that loss of, of movement for students to, you know, that they had declined. And I think this shows that we're starting to rebound. And I think that's really encouraging that we need to, you know, celebrate that, because yeah, there's always room for improvement, but this demonstrates that we are coming back.
Yep.
And I think that's, needs to be demonstrated, we need to, to make sure that comes out.
Yep. 1,000% agree. And so the next slide, again, is the math in, in relationship to like schools in our DIRTT.
And the state was 65.2.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions on this information? I know, and I appreciate the staff being willing to kind of go back and forth on conversations, I just think it's a, it's a richer conversation.
It's a lot of information.
It is.
Can I make an ancillary comment that I greatly, personally greatly appreciate this? I think I'm speaking for the board. But next January, we need to go over this all again
I know.
To reorient all the new people.
And I try to do it in steps, like, we really have been receiving information back from the state almost as soon as the kids are taking the test. It's usually embargoed, so we have to get like the A-OK to showcase it, but we really tend to be able to show you the first glance of it in September and then bring it back to you. So I think you see bits and pieces over time. So this is one of my favorite times, though, is to showcase when we get the report and we're able to really do a deeper dive and go through it, because then we're getting ready for a whole new testing cycle, you know, to compare it to, so.
You ready?
I just have one more comment that I have to tell you from the beginning of the year, I couldn't be more proud of our teachers and our staff, because they have been really concerned about the effects of COVID, not only academically, but socially, emotionally, and some of the way kids are regulating. So, but I have, I have to tell you that they have come to their principals, they've come to me and to Dr. Phil, and they've said, we're seeing gaps that we haven't seen before, and we identified them, and we want to do something about it. So whether it's through some extraprofessional development, whether it's through examining the data more closely and coming up with really ways to differentiate their instruction, like one size doesn't fit all, and I've got these students that really seem to be missing, whether it's a science topic, a math topic, an ELA, and they want to meet their needs, no matter where the kids are. I've, I've seen that from my kindergarten teachers, my preschool teachers, my fourth, fifth grade teachers, my middle school teachers, and my high school teachers. Science, in the high school level, just had that conversation. And, but they want to be able to meet the kids' needs and fill those gaps. So that's really where, when you hit, the, the rubber hits the road, is with our boots on the ground and our teachers. So they're the ones who decide, who really get all of the accolades when it comes to that, that hard work. And, and this student's hard work in doing a little overtime work to make sure that they're filling their gaps. So thank you for that, but I just wanted to do that shout-out for our teachers.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And it shows, look at the, look at the data, it shows.
So we have just a little bit more, we're going to kind of switch gears. We've been focusing on those upper grades, and we pulled together some of the primary grade reading data as a kickoff point to start the conversation as we move into May 8th and the curriculum and the changes that are, have been implemented and just our, our progress.
And can I just say, this is one of the areas where we're shifting the balance. We're looking at universal screeners that have been accepted by the state, and we've always used something called a DIBELS, which is Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy. But we, we've done it in a way where, when we do a running record with this child, where they, the teacher sits and listens to the child read and indicates what errors they're making and what needs to happen. They learn a lot from that in helping them with their instruction. We've used something called a Fanta Simpanel Basic Assessment, but we're really looking at these other assessments as universal screeners as well. So DIBELS is one, and we've just started with all kids this year. We also are piloting a program called AMIRA, which is another one that the state is recommending, which is very interesting, and we're getting results from that, and we're working with our teachers, listening to what our teachers are happy about, concerned about, because they will help us to make the decision about what's going to work best. So I just wanted to put that out there, that this is one of the shifting of the balance, really making sure that our phonics and phonemic awareness are being taught and all of the areas that are predictors of, you know, possible students at risk.
And so DIBELS, as Susan had mentioned, is one of the screeners that has been in the district, has primarily been used with students who are receiving interventions to, also to monitor students who have individualized plans. But this year is the first year they began to use it whole school as a scre, or whole grade level as a screener, so all students. They, they started it in mid-year. So we have one set of data points for K1 and 2 in terms of, you know, progress. We can't look at projects just yet. They will shortly be administering this again, and so at some point towards the summer, we'll have more information to look at what, with what the gains were, okay? So just to kind of run you through these, these are all like the foundational skills for reading, which start with letter name fluency, phonemic segmentation, so like being able to hear, like, hear the sounds in words and break them apart. Nonsense word fluency, so looking at a word that really isn't a word, being able to read it as though it was, that's really what we're talking about when we're talking about nonsense words. And so when you look at grade two does not, for all students as a screener, they don't do letter name fluency or the phonemic segmentation. It's just K, K and 1 who do those. And so if you look on the left, you have three different colors for letter name fluency, four for phonemic segment. And what those colors represent is where they're at in terms of benchmark, okay? So the red is what we would consider in need of intensive support. So the red is what we would consider in need of intensive support. So we need some good interventions there. The yellow is what we would refer to as those cusp kids, like they're almost there, but not quite. And then your green and blue is we're at or above where you should be at this point in the year, at this grade level. So on the left, you have the actual numbers, the count of students who are at each of those different levels. On the right, you have the percentage. And the percentage is given of students that are about where they need to be, or just below. And then you have what's in red, that intensive group again. Those are the kiddos we're really going to focus on intensive interventions for.
And during instruction, which we'll tell you more about in May, that means that a lot of the 90-minute time that kids are learning to read, there is, there could be some small mini lessons that are whole group, but there's a lot of work that's done in a small group of maybe two or three, or individually. And so a lot of that time is used for instruction in multiple levels. So your classroom teacher might be doing some of the instruction, is doing probably most of the instruction. But then you have interventionists and tutors and specialists who also will give kids additional instruction. So the more at risk, the more needs, the more instruction that those children will be receiving.
And so again, you can just compare from left to right the student count versus the percentage of, who are our kids that are on or close versus who are the kiddos that we really are targeting in terms of these foundational skills. Is there, does anyone have questions about this? I don't want to just read off each grade level to you.
I think you also see the improvement from K to 1 to 2. That, you know, that it takes time, that a child might not necessarily pick all of these skills up in kindergarten. You know, it really takes years for some. And sometimes, we're even doing this kind of work in grades 3, 4, and 5, 2, so.
And then on the next slide is the oral reading fluency. So reading out loud to a teacher and the teacher coding what the child is reading. And that really, that was not administered at that point in the year to K and 1 because they were working on those previous skills we just looked at. So this is specific to grade 2. And again, the colors still represent the same. So our red is our intensive group, where the yellow is what we would consider those cusp kids, and then the green and the blue is above, at or above grade level. And you'll see in terms of reading fluency, it's a significant smaller percentage of students who are in that intensive range.
And that NA, though, is specific to this particular assessment.
Right.
There are other assessments that we do, oral reading fluency, that we're able to look at in a different way.
Right. And so I believe some of those changes will come during that reading night in terms of those changes to oral reading fluency at the primary, at the K level, first grade. And then the last slide is really the Fanta-Simpanel at K1 and 2. And so the Fanta-Simpanel is specific to like the reading, how we understand what we're reading. And those are benchmarks, so dependent on the time of year. Every grade 1 student is, the benchmark changes. So at winter, it's one letter. At spring, it's another letter. So it might start with E, and then by the end of the year, they need to be at G, as an example. So what you're seeing here is kindergarten, we don't administer the F and P until mid-year, which is why you don't have a FAWL score because they're not reading yet. And Fanta-Simpanel is really specific to reading, like oral reading.
But there's another shift that I've heard from my kindergarten teachers. I'm really paying attention to them. And we have purchased a number of decodable texts for these levels, K1 and 2. In a decodable text, they really can't look at the picture to determine meaning. They're really looking at sound and letters and, you know, cracking the code. So the teachers have said, really, the F and P probably isn't the best type of device to use in kindergarten, using decodable texts and doing a running record on decodable texts. Using, you know, the DIBELS or the AMIRA will give them better information. So we are going to be making shifts, and you'll learn more about that. But our teachers and our specialists and even our consultants around the science of reading are helping us determine what's going to be the best tool that we can use to determine our students' needs in reading.
Are there, does anyone have questions? Dee?
I'm going to yield for this.
No, I just was wondering about the 80% on the Fanta-Simpanel. Does it only go to, that's the highest of the scale, is 80%?
No.
I don't.
No, it would go, no, it would go all the way up, to 100%.
Okay, so, okay.
Dee?
So it fair to assume that if we're using Fanta-Simpanel as assessment, that we're using Fanta-Simpanel to teach? In other words, the, that method, the whole language, if you will?
It's really not whole language. It's a balanced literacy approach, but the Fanta-Simpanel assessment gives us a level of the reading. So we can either use something called Lexiles, or we can use these F and Ps. It tells us what level the child is reading independently and what is instructional. So those are very important if you're differentiating your instruction to make sure that students are reading at their independent level, if they're reading by themselves, or at an instructional level as the teacher's teaching them.
Right.
And these numbers are equivalent to grade level?
Yes, benchmark.
Percentage of reading grade level?
Yes.
And really, it's by the time we look at the spring data that you really are determining if they're making the benchmark at the end of the year.
I think there is some controversies to, and some questions to whether whole language and balanced literacy are two sides of the same coin, or another way to put, balanced literacy is another way to say effectively whole language. There are lots and lots of debates. It's not a monolithic topic, but we'll get into it, I guess, when we talk about reading.
Right.
Any other questions? So this is, so the hope was, or the plan, was that we would be given a base of understanding about what the data says, about our report card, but also about our reading program. I know this is only for K through 12, but the K through 3 reading program, which is, which we have been thinking a lot about. So the May 8th, we are going to be talking about our, the reading program. And my understanding from Superintendent Austin is that we will be having different people through the district, both teachers and support personnel for the K through 3 reading program. But we wanted to have some data so that people could have some understanding about where it comes from. I, we might have questions that we want to make sure get asked or answered. And I think, I think it would just kind of make sense to have it go through Joyce because people are going to be just, you know, not like giving it to, in the next couple of weeks. And maybe she could then collate those and to make sure that you get them. So if we have got questions that are specific to the reading program, K through 3, let's make sure that it goes to Joyce. And so that Joyce will then put them all together and make sure that Susan and her staff have that. That just makes more sense to me than smattering them to you. Rita, I see that you have a question?
Yes, I was just curious. Do these, the DIBELS, chart students who are reading above grade level?
Yes, it shows in those layers that it's below grade level, near grade level, on grade level, and above grade level, in certain instances.
So the blue is the ones that, the blue would be the line that would be above grade level?
Yes.
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 Like the phonetics?
So I think just in the future, when we get data, to have a legend of what those different levels are, that would have been, that would have been helpful. I don't, I'm not intelligent enough just to understand what the colors are, outside of being pretty.
I like reds.
And it'd be nice to know how much above grade level. Is it just a little, or is it a lot? And how do we, you know, take, help those students that are reading way above grade level? What are we doing for them?
So that's a great.
And that's a good point.
And that's a great question that maybe we can have Susan and the staff talk about that. So that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm, to Susan's point earlier about how hard the staff work and teachers and staff around the district to make our students the best that they can be, I just commend. But I'm also honored and jazzed about the questions that this board had for the staff tonight and to understand the data, to look at data. It's cumbersome, it's weighty, but the questions and the thoughtful, the thoughtful direction that this board takes for the district is pretty phenomenal. And I say thank you for that.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Goodbye, folks.